For the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a quick note, as far as emergency evacuation in the event of an emergency, exits are in the back of the auditorium and the sides. If there is an emergency that you do need to exit the building for, we will keep you informed and get you out safely. First up is the approvals. I need approval for the Board of Education meeting minutes of January 8th, 2018. If I can get a motion, please.
Motion?
Barry and a second.
Second.
Jen, all in favor? That's everybody. There's an FYI on the budget appropriation report for the general school lunch fund and special aid funds as of January 31st, 2018. There is an FYI on budget transfers, as well as FYI on the extracurricular quarterly reports as of December 31st, 2017, and the revenue status reports of January 31st of 2018 that all will be received. I need an approval for the treasurer's report of December of 2017, if I can get a motion to approve.
Motion?
Christine and a second.
I'll second it.
That is Emily, all in favor? That is everybody. There are also warrants from January 18th of 2018 and January 31st of 2018. If I can get a motion to approve, please.
I'll make the motion.
Emily and a second.
Second.
Barry, all in favor? That is everyone, which takes us to our next segment, which is communications and announcements. Is there anything any board members would like to share that occurred over the last, since the last meeting?
I would.
Christine?
Oh, it's me, sorry. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend one of the fabulous six, of the six productions of Beauty and the Beast at Woodhull, between the Woodhull and STEM students. It was spectacular. I really have no other word than that. It was really a wonderful, I saw it in the morning, so I didn't get that whole nighttime effect, but apparently it was even greater when you saw it in the evening. Yeah, so congratulations to the 150, I believe, students that participated in that production, and to Ms. Van Vansch and to Mr. Hiscox, and to the principals of the schools and everybody involved. It was really fabulous.
Right. Anybody else?
I have two quick things. Just attended the math meeting, we're going to be talking about this later on in the agenda, but I just thought it was very well attended, and I thought there was some terrific dialogue between the administration and the parents in the room who were asking questions, very thoughtful questions, so I was happy to be there. And then the other thing is that there was a combined PTA, PTSA meeting at the high school last week, and Brandon Cusack, who was our high school principal, and Mr. Motto were there, but they were both, there was a very important conversation that was happening about vaping and the dangers of vaping and the proliferation of it, not just in Huntington, but really in school districts across Long Island, and the real problem that school leaders and parents are all facing, because the kids are far ahead of the curve, and I just would urge everyone to do your homework and read and pay attention to what your kids are doing, because it's something that I don't think any of us really have a whole handle on, and like anything else that happens when something, we get scared and we're misinformed, and I think the more educated we can be as parents and the better conversations we have with kids, the better we can sort of hold off some of the more destructive behaviors, so. But I was very grateful for that, for that conversation and that presentation, so.
Emily, I did read, soon after we were at that meeting, I read an article in the paper that said that there were, I think, three arrests of merchants, of people that worked at vendors that sold vaping supplies to minors, so it is something to, you know, watch out for, even, we were talking about ordering online, even, but really even our local stores aren't, maybe not doing everything they can to keep the good.
And actually, not to, you know, change the whole topic, but I know Doc Spencer has done some work in other schools. He's, you know, we have the advantage of having a legislator who's also a doctor, and public health is a really big issue for him, and I know he's doing some presentations and conversations, and so maybe, you know, that's something we want to think about, is bringing in some more folks to talk about this in a more extensive manner at some point. I think it's valuable.
He did reach out, actually Linda Guido reached out. They are doing a presentation, a full school-type assembly at Harborfields High School, and they invited us to attend that and possibly bring it in here as well, but I did say, you know, we're going to keep in touch with you moving forward. We do have another local agency coming in to meet with our students at the high school through physical education classes in a more small group discussion-based setting, so we're going to try that first, and that's going to be happening from the end of this month through March, so we put them on hold for now, because we have something else planned, which I, the problem with full school assemblies, no matter what they are, is they have an impact on that day, they may last a couple of days, but you do want the conversation to take place moving forward, so that there's no recidivism and behavior moving forward. So this is something, we need to engage our kids in conversation, and that's what we're really looking to do at this point.
I will just add that several years ago, and I think I've mentioned this before, we had, instead of a, say no, for lack of a better term, to drugs and alcohol guy come, we had a gentleman come who was a neuroscientist, and I will never forget this presentation.
Steven Dewey?
Who is it?
Steven Dewey.
I can't remember his name. I saved the letter for a long time, because I was so affected by it, but he basically showed slides of brains, and he showed the differences and changes in brains, and the kids got extra credit for being there, and there was no way to dispute the science and the facts that were right there in front of them, and so instead of, instead of arguing from a behavioral point of view or a parenting point of view, it's just, this is what it looks like when you do X, and this is what it looks like when you don't, and this is when your brain stops making brain cells and stops working, and the kid who's not doing, you know what I mean? So I just remember that, that was going back a long time, but I was very impacted by that presentation, and it might be worth looking at something like that.
If it's him, he's very good.
Envision the frying pan egg.
MRI images of people's brains, you know, so it was, I just, so anyway, I think it's an important conversation, and like I said, I think the best thing anybody can do is have open dialogue in your household, even if your kids are young, about what can happen and decisions that they make, so.
I'll have an announcement. Judy Moroff and Ms. Cooper have developed a new peer mentoring program at the high school. It's an ELL mentoring program. Looks like they've gotten a very nice turnout, good response. The mentoring program is intended to provide social and academic support for incoming numerous and transfers of the ELL students. They've selected, I believe that it is teachers that are selecting juniors and seniors that have shown an ability to help the incoming students. I think it's a great effort. If there's anything that I can do to come in and speak to them, I'm always available. Our mock trial team is competing on Wednesday, so give us that good luck cheer. Hopefully we come successful. We're up against St. Anthony's. St. Anthony's, big school. They certainly would like to beat us, and our kids have been putting these numerous hours into prepping and looking at themselves in the mirror, presenting these opening statements, and it's just a wonderful evolution of how these students take on this problem and how they're going to present it. So wish us luck. We'll let you know the next time we're here how we did.
Is this the first?
This is the first one, yes.
You know, I have one more thing to mention. I think it's still up there. There was a survey for parents to do, it was very. It is still up. It was very short, very quick, and if any of the high school parents out there wouldn't mind going online and doing that, it was a survey to ask you what kinds of information you would like to see covered at a parent academy that's coming up, and it had questions about topics, and, you know, you rated which one you would most like to hear, but there were also a few other questions about even being a parent mentor for another family in Huntington, or whether your family could use a parent mentor within our district. So if you have, I think it's just high school families?
I think it is, yeah.
If you have a high schooler and you wouldn't mind getting on there and filling out that survey, that I know that would be really helpful to the high school administration.
Okay. Many of us attended the legislative breakfast recently, where Senator Flanagan and Marcelino were both there, along with some other council representatives. That was the, yeah, the Friday one.
Oh, the Friday.
That was the Friday one, right. I did pose the question to them, what could they, what do they feel they could do to save school districts money, and sparked quite the debate amongst many of them. The direct answers to the question from two of the, to the senators was, create more jobs. So I was a little frustrated at the end, because I really didn't get an answer to my question, but I guess that's just politics. In any case, I just wanted to share that little tidbit with everyone. On to the superintendent.
First of all, I'd like to thank the board members for attending the legislative events. It's a very busy season at this time of year. Districts are in the throes of putting the details of their first draft budgets together. We actually start this process way back, and I'll speak to that with a presentation shortly. Legislative events are what they are, and it's important, whether or not we believe that it is going to have an impact or not, that our voices are heard, and Huntington is unique, and I've had this conversation with trustees and constituents for many years now, that there are a lot of characteristics of this school district and its demographics that make it unlike any other school district on Long Island, in a good way, in most respects, but in terms of how we're treated with respect to state aid, not so much, and it's something we're going to have to keep fighting for, as does every district for their own individual purposes. Most of this I can speak to during the budget presentation. There has been a rush of things happening at the state level. For those that don't know this, the new ESA Plan, Every Student Succeeds Act Plan for New York has been approved, and they're still ironing out details at this point, but it's, it's the plan that's going to guide accountability and testing, among other things, in New York State for years to come, and the idea is now accountability is going to be expanded beyond simply test scores and recognizing some of the other positive aspects of school districts across the state, but this, there is going to be a transition, and the transition will not be firmly entrenched until the state passes regulations that guide us in terms of how we're going to implement this plan, so there's still quite a few question marks out there. Going back to the finances, if any of you saw it recently, there was a report in Newsday on the state comptrollers fiscal stress scores. We've always scored a 10, which is no fiscal stress, but that 10 has always existed, because we have to take out, we have to issue tax, we have to sell tax anticipation notes. At the beginning of the year, we haven't collected taxes, taxes, well, the town hasn't collected taxes from our taxpayers at that point, so we actually have to sell these notes in order to cover the expenses prior to tax collections and the tax receipts being sent to us. This year, that 10 was taken away. We actually scored a zero, which is as ideal as it gets, primarily because we lowered the amount of tans that we issued. We went from 20 million to 18 million, so we are demonstrating absolutely no fiscal stress in Huntington. There was an environmental stress score of 20, which had to do with an average elementary class size of 23, and also a percentage of English language learners, which is, you know, obviously, although class size is within our control, we, 23 is just above the 22, that would indicate no stress, and obviously, we educate the students who live in Huntington, so the other piece is not something that we would pay any mind to. I spoke a while back about participating on a regional diversity and equity initiative advisory council. That first meeting is next week, and this council is going to be representing statewide in terms of helping to increase the diversity of the administrative and teaching staff, not only on Long Island, but across the state. There is a teacher shortage at this point, regardless of who, when, and what teacher preparation program we're talking about, but this council is designed to help not only increase the number of teaching candidates, pre-service teaching candidates, but also get students in, into the profession, among, if not the, among the most noble professions out there, from, from all aspects of life in New York State. Kindergarten registration, the postcards went out. The dates of registration at the respective primary buildings are on those postcards. We'll also be holding makeup dates, and obviously, if you miss any of those dates, you can still come in to register, and these are for the incoming kindergarteners who will be five before December 1st, and it is actually the Huntington High School class of 2031, which made me take a step back. Also going back, universal pre-kindergarten. This year, for those who don't know, we are offering UPK classes in-house, partnering with Scope at Jefferson Southdown and in this building. Next year, with the final, finalizing the transition of the fourth grade to the intermediate schools, we are going to move the pre-kindergarten classes tentatively into each, depending on registration, to each of the primary buildings. Ideally, we'd want the kids to be in the buildings that they would attend as kindergartners, and there is the prospect of making one of the buildings house an extended day pre-K program, which we've never done before, and I did share that with the board. That is a possibility as well, for those who are interested at a small cost of, relatively small cost of families. A lot of the other items I have here mentioned, I do want to share my, I was just awestruck by the Woodhull Jack Abrams kids on Saturday night. They were absolutely terrific, and I'll tell you what hits me. I've been here seven years, and most of these kids were just peanuts. I've seen many of them since they walked in the doors back in whatever year it was, and to see these kids on stage, honestly, it was hard for me to keep a dry eye at the end of that show, just looking at these kids where they are now, from where they were years back. This is what makes it all worthwhile for me, so you guys did a terrific job. And we expect to see you on the big stage at Finley and at the high school as well, and Jack Abrams in Woodhull next year, if you're still in fifth grade.
Speaking of, I forgot to mention that the Finley, you might want to mention that.
Yes, I have that here as well. Finley's putting on Mulan Jr. Mulan Jr. will be, the curtain will rise on Friday and Saturday nights at 7:00 PM, and then the high school on March 23rd and 24th will be performing Cinderella, and they are obviously very.
Disney kind of year.
It is a Disney kind of year.
Cinderella's not technically Disney. It's Rodgers and Hammerstein.
Okay, but the movie is Disney.
Two more quick things to mention. We've, a lot of, lot of talk, we have a brilliant group of kids here tonight to show some of the work that they have done. This coming weekend, and I just have the details on this, at Finley on Saturday, the robotics group will be participating in a local VEX challenge. This is a little bit different than the first Lego League, but very similar. This is the first competition we're actually hosting in Huntington, so I got the detailed information, which I will share with the board this week. This is from Mr. Reynolds and from Mr. Santiago. It's an exciting time to have us bringing 40 teams into our middle school environment to compete, and we're obviously one of the competitive teams, so if you're around between 8:00 and 2:00 o'clock on Saturday, yes, at Finley, this competition, competition will be held. And the last thing I'll mention is the Tri-CYA, and I don't, for whatever the reason, I didn't write the date down, the Tri-CYA Hall of Honor, March 15th, which is.
March 22nd.
March 22nd. Our own Mr. Xavier Palacios will be one of this year's honorees, so we're very proud of him. So if you're available and interested, please, please join us there.
Very good. That takes us to our first public commentary of the evening. If anyone would like to come to the microphone, please understand the following rules do apply. Public commentary is a total of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If you do come up to the microphone, please state your name and affiliation to the district. Please note that the conversations will be started on items for discussion and action, and if there is time remaining in that 30 minutes, continue on to any other open issues. Anyone that likes to come to the microphone, may do so now. All that work for nothing.
All of that, somebody should get up. Mr. Graeber.
Looking forward to Legos.
We meet again.
Please state your name.
Yes, and your affiliation.
Good evening. My name is James Graeber. I am a parent, soon to be a parent in the district next year. It's freaking me out a little bit. I am a teacher in the district, and I also am the president of the Teachers Association in the district. Actually, one procedural question, and then a statement. The, I was just wondering, it seems that we are taking, discussing and taking action tonight on the curriculum change, and I'm just wondering why that didn't appear in the items for discussion and action.
It could have appeared in either discussion for action or under curriculum instruction, so it's, it's open for commentary as well, but because it's a curricular item, all textbooks, new course proposals have always been placed in that section.
Okay, thank you. So as you are considering a program to accelerate all middle school students to take the algebra regions during their eighth grade year, the, I think it's appropriate to consider some things. The putative benefits of this program change are laudable, including more heterogeneous classrooms, greater foundations in math, and potentially higher college graduation rates, with some of the research that was shared at an earlier meeting. As an economics teacher, though, I know we are faced with trade-offs in all areas, and I think it's important that the board consider those areas as well when making their decision. The meetings that I've attended have raised at least three important areas of concern. First, the ability to support students that require it within the program. Second, the ability to challenge gifted math students further within the program, and third, the secondary impacts that might come about as a result of this, particularly on non-core classes at Finley, such as health, art, home and careers, technology. I believe the administration has outlined their plans for the first of these concerns to a large degree, but I would like to see some additional thought provided to the other two. For example, while Art 8 and Art Studio will both be scheduled in eighth grade, a considerable number of those students might be blocked out of taking them as a result of the program. The long-term impacts of this on one of the crown jewel programs in the district are largely unknown. Would a zero period be possible to allow students to schedule classes that they desire in addition to those that are required of them? Is an honors math lab appropriate and/or possible for, for gifted students that are seeking that extra challenge? Can study halls be eliminated so that students are exposed to all that Finley has to offer? I think these are potential ways to mitigate some of the concerns that, that have been raised, both by teachers and parents. I think it's important that these questions be addressed now, as the possibility of future acceleration in science will only exacerbate these concerns. I'd like us as a district to make decisions with our eyes open to the consequences, both intended and otherwise. Thank you.
I have a question.
Thank you, James.
Mr. Graeber?
Yes?
What is zero period?
A zero period is offered in some programs, maybe a period before the school day, which would allow for some flexible scheduling of teachers, which would allow greater flexibility within the program scheduling.
Thank you.
And I'll just comment on a couple of the things that Mr. Graeber brought up. We did have a conversation about the scheduling changes and what would and would not impact students, and, and obviously, the impact on Art 8 is speculative at best. It would really depend upon how many students either voluntarily or were recommended for a support period in grade eight, and we can talk about this more when we talk about the Math 7 program down below. I don't know if it would be as drastic as, as was just presented. It might or might not be, and the concept of a zero period is a way to allow students who might not otherwise, because they are engaged in that support period, might not otherwise be able to take, it might not be Art 8, it might be another course that they would typically be able to take, give them the option to take it either before school or creatively address the scheduling issue. That situation exists now. We have students that take eighth grade math that are in a math lab situation that we have attempted to work certain scheduling changes with, so that they can take as much as possible, but there are students who obviously have to make choices, and that happens at the high school as well. So we will commit, and I will certainly recommend to the board in terms of committing to as many creative scheduling things that we can do within our financial means, and that's, that's going to be a big piece of this as well.
So when you say that the situation occurs now, you don't mean that some kids haven't?
Meaning that there is, there are some students who don't get, and, and I guess my biggest concern is a student who would want to take both art and music, and we do have a group of them who take, whether it be band, chorus, and want to take art as well, to get them everything they want, and that, we may have to think a little creatively there, and, and like I said, the situation exists now, and those students are not able to schedule everything that they like within that, that nine-period day, and what fortunately allows us to do this is a nine-period day, because many school districts do not have that, and if, if not for that nine-period day, a lot of this would be impossible, so.
So are you saying it's something that would be considered once the schedule?
Well, we, we would certainly look at, if it warranted it, depending on how many students did not or were not able to take, and this has nothing to do with the math change per se, but if there was a way to allow students within our financial means to gather what they want in the schedule, we'd look at it.
And I know that right now, some students choose to forego lunch period in order to get art, or if they're going to.
Right, and, and I have to tell you, from a personal perspective, and some may disagree, I am not a huge fan of students not having a break in the day for lunch, and I know teachers are very accommodating, and if it's not a situation where lunch would be inappropriate in terms of eating it in a facility where it shouldn't be eaten, but kids do need to have, and art sometimes can provide that break, but to have a break in the day and just to take a load off their minds, so they can, they can wind down. I'm always anxious about a student, particularly at that age, not having a lunch period.
Right. Right. I mean, if they have art or music, at least they're thinking in a different way. It's sort of a break from one side of your brain to the other side of your brain.
Absolutely.
For a time period, not that you're not.
And it's done at the high school relatively often. You know, we don't stop students from, from pursuing their passions, but you also want to make sure that they're not overloading themselves.
So, anyone else?
Hi, my name's Allison Martin. This is the first time I've actually been to a Board of Education meeting. My son is in fourth grade, thank you, here at Jack Abrams STEM School, and I'm coming to today, actually, sent an email earlier today to the board and to Mr. Polansky in regards to the full acceleration program that you're, you know, set to hopefully roll out. My particular concerns are two things. Number one, from the, from the studies that I've read, it's a great program for kids who are ready for that program. It's not something that should necessarily be rolled out to all students, as it can be detrimental to the students who aren't prepared academically for those programs. Number two, as somebody who works in the special education field, I work with administrators and special education departments on a daily basis, and a main focus of a lot of the programs that are going on in schools right now, there's a big, huge mental health push. A lot of kids who are feeling the pressure of these types of programs, school refusals, anxiety, depression, things like that, it's growing tremendously, from people that I know in the field who are tops in their field. So my concern is also, are we pushing these kids too far, too fast, for those who aren't ready? There might be students who are academically ready for this, but might not be prepared for the pressure that comes along with that. So I feel like it may be something to, to visit as something that could be more voluntary, teachers, you know, recommendations, the measurements that we're using to gauge what students are appropriate for these programs, and really leaving it up to the parents to also decide whether this is something that's good for their student. I think it's a great program, you know, I think my son would probably do excel in this program, but I do, I am concerned about the students who are not going to be ready for this program. I have people who are friends and administrators in other districts that have had it rolled out this way, and within three or four years, they've had to roll it back, to make it a more voluntary program, in which at that time, there's still an 80% voluntary attendance in these programs, but the detrimental side of this is for kids who aren't ready for these programs, it's more detrimental to them to go in it than if they were in a non-accelerated program to begin with. The idea of possibly failing or being pushed too hard kind of puts that, you know, that feeling of negative in school, and the pressure to compete against peers that they're not ready to compete against. So, you know, those are just some of my concerns. I wish the board would maybe take into consideration ma- making it a more voluntary program, rather than rolling it out to every single student for the next few years.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore, can I ask you a question? Did you mention that you had emailed today?
Yes.
Because I didn't, I didn't receive that email.
I didn't see it.
I responded.
I actually sent, sent it with a link. I can resend it tomorrow with, to a Stanford University study that was done in the Silicon Valley, San Francisco.
Okay, just.
School district.
Want to emphasize, I didn't get that today, or I would have spoken with you today.
Yeah.
You sent it around 4:00 today?
Yes.
Okay. Been a busy day for us.
I had a few crises and, and things going on at work today that I couldn't get to until the end of the day, but I did send it. So I think it's, I think it's a worthwhile study to look at, you know, and to see what, you know, with their, they did a pretty intense study as to what was appropriate, and, you know, the things that they discussed, for kids who are placement-appropriate, it's a fantastic program, but for kids who aren't ready, it can be such, such a negative for them in their academic career, so my concern is more for those kinds of kids.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? All right, that's the case. We go to our first item for presentation.
There you are. All right, so what, what we're going to start with right now is unique. For the first year, those that are attending the Jack Abrams STEM Magnet School, at various levels, had an opportunity across the board to participate in either the first Lego League junior competition, which is still ongoing, and our fifth, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Moore, fifth and sixth graders participated in the first Lego League competition itself. All students had a chance to participate, and then the local, I'll say, local choices, those who, who shined at the local level competed in a regional competition a couple of weeks ago, and we thought it might be a good idea to have them share some of the great things that they accomplished. So I'm going to hand it over to Donna Moore, the principal of this building.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Mr. Polansky, Ms. Acker, Mrs. McCoy, and the members of the school board for inviting us here tonight to share our experiences in the first Lego League competition. First is an organization that was founded by Dean Kamen in 1989 as an inter- an international high school robotics competition that, as you all know, our high school students have been successfully competing in for the past four years. At the lower-grade levels, FIRST teamed up with LEGO to create a similar competition. Last year, our fourth-grade students participated in the First LEGO League Junior Competition, and this year, our fifth and sixth-grade students competed in the upper division. The upper division of this competition is extensive, and it encompasses three main components. There's a demonstration of the team core values, there's a research project related to a specific theme, there's the design and programming of a robot to compete on a game board like you see here tonight. Students immersed in this competition develop critical thinking, team-building, and presentation skills, and while the popularity of these competitions have grown and many schools compete in these competitions, they do so at a club level. Here in Huntington, with our focus on equity, we're fortunate to have been given the resources to be able to offer this opportunity to every single student at Jack Abrams, which is truly unique. As part of our makerspace instruction, students in every fifth and sixth-grade class have been preparing for our own in-school competition that will be held later this year. Based on their performance in class, these students here with me tonight were selected to participate and represent Jack Abrams at a regional competition that took place in Nitskonsett on January twentieth. While our team didn't take any awards this year, we're really very proud of our sixth-grade team for taking seventh place overall in the robotics competition, and they'll demonstrate their robot for us tonight. We thought it just died, the battery, but it didn't, thankfully. And our fifth-grade team is going to share a little bit about their research project, and they did a wonderful job impressing the judges with their creative solution to transporting and filtering water in remote areas. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce our fifth-grade Aquabots. And our sixth-grade Water Wizards.
There are six core values. They are: We are a team. We do the work to find solutions with guidance from our mentors. We know our mentors don't have all the answers. We learn together. We honor the spirit of friendly competition. What we discover is more important than what we win. We share our experiences with others.
We learned about gracious professionalism and cooperation. These strange words that didn't really mean much to us at first, then we learned that these words were just a cool way of explaining how we should treat each other with other teams. It means we can be really competitive, but at the same time, treat each other with kindness and respect.
At the competition, we were judged on our core values. Our team members went into our room with judges. We had no idea what to expect, but we knew it had something to do with showing our values. Our fifth-grade team was challenged to act out a theme related to water. We had to act out getting water from a well.
Our sixth-grade team got to play picture-nice. It was fun, and we learned how to depend on each other and that every person was important on the team.
Project Research. Each year, there's a theme to the LEGO competition. This year, it was hydrodynamics. The challenge was to learn about the topic, identify a problem, create an innovative solution, share with others, and present your solution at the tournament. Our sixth-grade team researched water usage and designed an app that would help reduce the amount of water wasted by people taking long showers. Tonight, we have our fifth-grade project, the Smart Cart.
The project.
Our project challenge was about the human water cycle. Our aim was to focus on an issue about how people find, transport, use, or dispose of water.
The problem we focused on was the difficulty people experienced from carrying water in jerrycans on their long walks from home, long walks home in remote areas.
Unfortunately, we discovered that women and children are tasked with this time-consuming and physical challenge. While researching, we learned about an Ethiopian child that struggled to carry water back to her village. It took her a long time and left her almost no time to go to school.
Our solution was to make an easy-to-manoeuvre cart that could help people transport and purify water at the same time, giving them more time to go to school.
So, this is our smart cart.
The last part of the tournament was the robot challenge. We had to design a LEGO robot with attachments that could complete different missions on the mission board. On the board, there are eighteen different missions. For each mission, you accumulate points, but there are also penalties that deduct points if your robot fails to complete the mission.
Technical judging. During the tournament, we were also judged on construction, design, programming, and strategy used to complete missions. When we were in the room, the judges asked us about our design, why we chose to do the missions we did, and how we programmed our robot. The programming was challenging, and we had to solve lots of problems to be able to successfully complete a mission. Even though it was tough at times, we really grew from the experience and learned a lot about problem-solving.
So, this is the board, which has to do our programming. This is our robot. Each team basically started with the same basic robot, and we used this attachment to complete two of our missions. Each team could create their own unique attachments, so no attachments were like this. And this is the whole base, it's have a external cable...
I'll get something.
...and not touch your robot unless it's in it without getting points taken off. And it has a grid, so you can line up where your robot is.
Nice.
If it didn't have a grid, you would just be like, "Oh, I think it might be." And it actually helps a lot with programming. So, we decided to show you two missions today. There's one over here called the Water Fountain. The objective is to get the waters into the basin, I guess, to push the level to raise the water of the fountain. And the second mission is this thing called the Filter, and the objective is to push it to watch the... So, we decided to start on a lot here.
This is awful good practice.
Almost the same.
It is, it's fantastic. Well done.
And our second mission is the Water Fountain. There are fourteen missions on the board, and each mission is worth a different amount of points. So, like, the filter was worth thirty points, and the fountain was worth twenty. So, since we fully completed the filter, we would get thirty points, but since we didn't completely complete...
Didn't push it down? Right.
...we wouldn't get points for that. And if our robot had not become completely in the base and stopped, say, here, and we decided to take it back, we would have lost five points and gotten one penalty, and the points for the mission we tried to complete would not have counted.
Very interesting.
And we did all twenty. No, we had two and a half minutes.
Pick a couple.
So, we tried the rain, which was...
Yeah, that's good.
...to, like, the rainfall, and then we did the filter, the water fountain, and the removal, which you had to pick up the broken pipe and bring it back to base, and then replace it with a...
So, you designed your robot based on the tasks that you wanted to complete?
And so, people had, like, crazy, giant boxes, like, this tall guy, and we only need that little...
You're effective. And so, it's all pre-programmed in the robot? Like, you didn't have a remote control, like, the way the high school kids have, right?
If you use a remote control, you're disqualified.
So, it's all programmed in the robot? Well done, guys.
You must take a computer, and I forget what, it's called programming, yeah, LEGO programming, and you use different, like, different blocks or bricks, and you plug in how much you want, maybe this to go up, or how far you want it to go, how many degrees to turn. There's different ways you can do it. You can do it by degrees, by rotations, by seconds, and on the robot, there's actually a thing called port view, where you can measure how far it can go.
Very good.
And you just can put that...
How long did the programming take? Like, for one of the tasks?
It depends on what task it is.
Okay.
And sometimes you could program it so many different times, and it won't work, and it's just the attachment that's wrong, or the placement that's wrong, and no matter what you do, unless you change the placement or the attachment, it won't work. And you learn a lot, because, like, say, one mission, I was having a lot of trouble with, and it was really easy for someone else.
Yeah, that's funny, the way that happens, right? Mr. Ren...
We were alone together, so, like, we each did our own thing, but then we helped each other. So, like, I would be running a mission, while he would be fixing his mission, and while he was fixing a mission, I would be, like, and when I was fixing a mission, he would be running it, and we'd be watching each other's missions, and, like, saying things to sort of help you, like, help each other.
That's awesome.
But guys, what are your names? And I'm Jack. Malcolm.
You guys did an amazing job. Mr. Reynolds is going to be so excited, that you've done all this legwork. I mean, that bodes well for your high school robotics team.
And you have cool uniforms.
And they have excellent T-shirts, I agree.
They did a lot, and they did a lot. They had a lot, they had more...
They had a lot of moving parts.
We're supposed to do the parking model, and we call it the tail, because we were coming up with names for the robot, because you can actually type in a name, and for whatever, and I don't know what anyone was thinking we said, but if we came up with a name with a fat surfer cat, remember, it was a fat cat at first, we didn't realize it made something to do with water, but we called the back attack, they're the tail, because it's like a cat.
It does.
And I don't even know how, like, it was like a claw that went up front on the main thing, and we used that for removal of the fountain. Filter's actually kind of interesting, because what we used, what we did before the competition, we actually put, like, a side arm, so it would go up, it would go up, then we'd turn around and just drive past it, so we could slap it, but we ran into a lot of problems with the barrier right in front of the filter, so we found a much faster way, and the program was actually being fast filter, because it was so much faster. We put the claw down, and it just moved, ran the filter, came right back, and that wound up being the mission that always worked, and it's the only one that we could complete, but it was fun, and I...
You guys did an awesome job. You should be so proud of yourselves. You should be so proud of your team.
I think what you're hearing in these children as they're expressing this, and it's one
of the things that I think is the most impressive part of this competition, is that they are as into this competition as they are a sporting event, and it's so nice to see them in an academic pursuit that's really challenging their mind in so many different ways, and be as excited and into it as they are a sporting event. So, I'm going to just turn it over to Uma, who's going to give you a few parting words.
The most valuable thing we learned in LEGO League was how to work as a team. We learned how to solve problems and conflicts without the help of our coaches and mentors. We learned that in order for everyone to be included, we needed to agree on one idea. We learned that if everyone's included and not in conflict, everything gets done ten times faster, and there's more time to make the project better. While working as a team, we found ways for everyone to get a chance to do everything. After our time in LEGO League, I think we will all work better and more efficiently in a team or group.
So, the First LEGO League was an amazing experience, and we learned so much. So, on behalf of our school's LEGO League, we say thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Ms. Morrow, if we can coordinate for a quick picture, maybe by the board?
Sure, sure.
And I'll just mention that, for those of you who haven't seen the high school competition, this is really a microcosm of that competition. The high school competition, these kids get six weeks to build a very intricate machine. Honestly, it's, day and night, they are working for this six-week period. The skills that they're learning now, should they wish to pursue them at the high school level, are very similar, but obviously, on a much broader and also more detailed scale, larger scale. But what you heard from these guys tonight, and what I love hearing, is that they know it's okay to make a mistake, because that's what they learn from, and the only way to get to the point that they're at now is to work through those mistakes together. It's teamwork, and that's what's going to lead them to success in life, and there's no doubts about that. So, you guys did a terrific job, we're very proud of you.
You really did.
Awesome job.
Okay, so let's... Will you stand in there, Ms. Morrow? Just in case.
You know, you guys are good, actually.
Squeeze in, Maurice.
Yep, there you go. That's perfect.
You don't just play a crazy inventor. You are. You're not just one on TV.
Thank you, guys, terrific.
You did an awesome job.
Ms. Morrow, students and parents, you're welcome to stay for the tax levy limit presentation, but if you'd like to...
Where are you all going?
I don't blame you. We're just going to wait a minute to allow the, those who wish to go, to go.
Can I go?
Yeah, you can go.
Six slides.
Oh, wow, you two, huh? Come on.
It's a thousand. It's like it's a drive.
I'm in the way.
Nice. Going to take a picture, going to take it?
Uma, then. Uma! You lost, Uma.
Yeah, it's... Oh, wow, okay. How are you?
Yeah, I think so.
You got this, guys. I do. So, tax levy is the amount of dollars that we have to collect from our district taxpayers on this stadium, on this park, and then, I got this, no, like, the tax rate, oh, it's easy. Oh, my God. And then have the...
Yes, this is slide by slide.
I just explained the tax...
Put you on the spot again.
Did I put it back?
Yeah, no.
What do you need? Can I have it here?
That's not the one, though.
Here, hang here. Yeah, so, we've got to get it down to nine minutes and thirty seconds.
Okay, moving on to the budget presentation for the tax levy limit.
Well, one's back.
I came back, though.
We still waiting on anybody?
Emily.
Okay, moving on to the budget presentation for the tax levy limit. Well, one's back.
I came back though.
We still waiting on anybody? Mr. Clark. We might as well get started. Unfortunately, we lost a bit of the audience and most of our participation in government students. So those that are left will have to convey. Uh, this is, this is really the second but the first formal announced presentation related to the budget development process. Twenty eighteen nineteen process, that is. What we'll present this evening is the calculation of the district's tax levy limit. And I'm going to do my best, as I attempt to do every year, to make this as simple as possible. And as always, uh, very well received is the comparison of the tax levy and the tax rate. And I'm going to ask Mrs. Hebert and Mrs. Rogan to collectively explain this. I know. So, the most important number attached to any school district budget is the tax levy. And that is basically the collective amount of monies that we have, we have to collect from our taxpayers to support our budget, whatever that year budget is. Uh, so basically, our budget last year, I'm sorry, our budget this year was just over a hundred and twenty-six million dollars. The majority of that budget was supported by the tax levy, meaning that taxpayers, the bill that taxpayers receive and paid, supported a hundred and three, a hundred and four, almost a hundred and five million of that hundred and twenty-six million dollar budget. Now that ratio is not the same for all school districts. So if you take the whole budget, you take out the state aid, you take out any prior year fund balance that's appropriate, appropriated. You take out any other revenues, what's left is what the taxpayers have to provide. In Huntington, because our combined wealth ratio is relatively high for a western Suffolk district, our tax levy percentage of the budget that's covered by taxpayers is, in some cases considerably higher than what other districts experience. So that's a total dollar amount that we levy upon the resident taxpayers. The tax rate, if you actually take that levy divided by the totaled assessed value in the district and multiply it by 100, that is the rate that's used to calculate your tax bill and that's typically expressed in the form of a percentage. And we'll get to that in, in a short period of time. But as we proceed through the budget presentations, every week as the budget changes, as the drafts evolve, we're gonna continue to talk about what the tax levy is, what the tax rate is until the date that the board adopts. I believe it's April 16th. So there'll be some changes, there'll be some discussion, there'll be some things that are considered until we get to that point. So just keeping a couple of things in mind here. What we're gonna talk about tonight is the tax levy limit, also referred to as the tax cap. It's been referred to for years as the 2% tax cap. It's really not 2%. There's a formula that's involved here and it really is dependent upon first and foremost, what the inflation rate is. The CPI, the Consumer Price Index, urban, uh, the growth from one year to the next. So depending on what that CPI, where it falls at the end of a given calendar year, uh, the tax levy limit could be at, could be less, it could be more than 2%. So as you can see in that first bullet point, the levy limit is 2% plus exclusions or whatever the inflation rate is plus exclusions, whichever is, whichever is lower. The rate of inflation, it's the CPIU as I mentioned, for the calendar year ending before the budget development process really kicks in. The CPIU for the calendar year or the growth in that average monthly CPIU for the calendar year of 2017 is 2.13%. That is higher than the allowable 2%, so we start with that 2%. So if you look back to that first bullet, the lesser of 2% plus exclu, exclusions or the inflation rate, it's the first item in parentheses or the first collection of items in parentheses that we're gonna pay attention to. I was a little wordy, sorry. Here's what it has looked like for the past couple of years. And you'll notice back in 2016, 17, there was barely any growth in the Consumer Price Index. So we were starting in, in a bit of a hole there. But for the first time in several years, in five years, we're back at a 2% start point for the eighteen nineteen planning process. And these percentages, by the way, these CPIU figures are the same for every school district in New York State. I mentioned this before, that 2% is just a, a start point for this year. This has nothing to do with an individual tax bill directly. The cap applies to the tax levy, the collective amount of monies that we collect, that number only. Now let's take a look at how we ended up where we are for this year. So we start with the tax levy for 2017-18. The board adopted this in its final form in September of 2017. It's actually identical to what the board adopted back in, in May. One oh four eight one four one oh seven, so that is the current year's tax levy. We then multiply that number by a tax-based growth factor. This is something that ORPS, the Office of Real Property Tax Services, provides for every school district. So you take that first number I provided and multiply it by this factor. In this case, it amounts to 0.6% for Huntington. That reflects any new construction within school district boundaries, any newly taxable status of existing properties. So if there was a property that was piloted prior to this date and is now no longer on a pilot schedule and back on the full tax roll, that would be reflected here. And any improvements, it could be an individual home where improvements are made that raise taxes. Whatever affects the tax values in this community would be reflected in that growth factor. And that factor is actually relatively high for a western Suffolk district. So if you look at a lot of our neighboring districts, they're down near 1.0001. Uh, some of them closer to 1.0 across the board. Uh, what that does show is there have been some, some, there has been some growth on the tax rolls in this school district over the past year. We then take the pilots receivable during the current school year and add them in. Eighty-four five seventy-seven is the figure we used in last year's tax cap, tax levy limit calculation. That cannot change from now, uh, from then until now. So this number's fixed, it's not a relatively high number in terms of pilots that, that districts experience in general. And we then subtract any applicable exemptions. Any legal or tort judgments greater than 5% of the current tax levy, not applicable. The seventeen eighteen capital tax levy, also not applicable. Um, that typically reflects, if, if a district is able to exempt a capital tax levy, it usually means that their building aid, I'm sorry, their, I'm losing here. Their, their building aid is at a level that is lower than their expenditures in the capital area. And that really does not impact their debt service per se. So our debt service is relatively low, we pride ourselves on having very little debt at this point. Our building aid is much higher than that, so capital tax levy exemptions don't really apply to us. So if you take all those factors into account, it changes the seventeen eighteen, it adjusts the seventeen eighteen tax levy from one oh four eight to one oh five five two seven five six nine. So it incorporates all those factors I just mentioned, one through four. And for those who know they're gonna be tested on this, this will be posted on the website so that you'll have direct access to it. Okay, so we take that adjusted tax levy and multiply it by 1.02. That is the 2% that we talked about at the beginning of this presentation. And then we throw in a number of different factors here for eighteen nineteen. First, subtracting pilots receivable. This is all actual stuff here. Two sources, Suffolk County IDA and the town of Huntington. There are four pilots on the books currently for eighteen nineteen. I have them broken out on the bottom below the dotted line. So it's a little bit of an increase from the current school year from eighty-four five seventy-seven to this number, one oh three seven sixteen. Um, the first two pilots and payments in lieu of taxes, just to give people a better understanding of what pilots are, these are properties that don't pay full tax value. So they may have, um, what looks like to be a much higher assessed value, but because they've been granted exemptions or abatements from the Suffolk IDA, uh, they are paying less than full value. And that's not something that typically makes those, those of us who pay full value on our homes very happy. Because if they don't pay their full value, that difference gets spread amongst all the other taxpayers in the community. Those first two properties, it's, it's that warehouse area on East Second Street with a number of different addresses. The Seven High Street property and Gateway Gardens, which is weaning off its pilots over time. And notice there's a couple of properties that are not on there that have typically been associated with pilots such as Whitman Village. Highview, thank you. They, they've been off for a couple of years now.
Do we have expiration dates for these weapons pilots?
We do. I don't have them off the top of my head. Um, some of them are, the High Street property is relatively new and, and the value there is, is much lower than, than, than the other two. The others have been in place. Five, it's, it's gonna be a while for that one. Uh, typically what happens is they'll, they'll pay nothing for the first five years, then they'll be weaned back on to the full tax rolls over the next 10. East Second Street, I think they're about three or four years in at this point, and Gateway Gardens longer than that. Carryover from the prior fiscal year, this makes a considerable difference. What that number represents is the amount below the tax levy limit that the board adopted last year. So we had the capacity of, well, the board had the option of adopting at a limit which wasn't necessary. They came in well below that limit for one year, we can carry that money over for budget development processes. So last year, the board adopted a tax cap, I'm sorry, tax levy below a limit. That limit was 566,420 higher than what they actually adopted. Any eighteen nineteen exemptions, which you're gonna see very quickly, have no impact on us for this year. Again, no ca, uh, no tort judgments, no capital tax levy. Once again, our debt service is much less than our building aid. If there was a change in the employee retirement system or teacher retirement system contribution rates from this year to next year, uh, greater than 2% increase, we'd be able to write off a portion of that. And as you will see here, the ERS anticipated contribution rate is predicted to come down. That's a percentage of civil service salaries that we pay every year. 14.9% for next year to be exact, and that's lower than the 15.3% of, of civil service salaries that we're, that we're paying this year. So there's no exemption there. The teacher retirement anticipated contrib, contribution rate is going up from the 9.8% that's currently on the books for this year, but it's still a less than 2% increase. Therefore, there's no exemption to be had there. And these are important numbers because, you know, obviously, that TRS number, there's no exemption that is going to cost us. That 10.63% represents a portion of certificated salaries, teachers, administrators. Uh, we have to pay, and there's a lot of teachers and administrators in the district, uh, that, that take advantage of the teacher retirement system. The pension that New York State has put in place has nothing to do with the school district per se, but we are obligated by law to pay in whatever the anticipated contribution rate is. In this case, it's just been confirmed at 10.63%. So we take all those figures, the one oh seven, six thirty-eight, one twenty, prior to the exclusions and the pilots. We subtract out the estimated eighteen nineteen pilots. We add in the five sixty-six, four twenty carryover from the current year, no exemptions. And we end up with a one oh eight, one hundred, eight twenty-four number. 3.14% over the seventeen eighteen, the current year tax levy. And that is a hefty sum there, that's equivalent to 3,286,717. Now I do wanna stress here that this is what, actually it's gonna come up in the next slide, so let me go to that. Or the next slide after this. In this presentation, if you do wanna access it after tonight, and I certainly encourage you to do so, here's one sheet that shows it all from top to bottom. It is worked into the presentation, so this shows everything I've just shown on one page and it may be a little easier for some to read. These options exist every year under chapter ninety-seven of the tax laws. The board can propose a budget with a tax levy at or below that level that I just showed. That 3.14% represents the amount or the percentage, and also the 3.2 million that the board can, can increase the tax, can adopt a budget with an increased tax levy requiring a simple majority vote. And as in the past, eligible residents would receive an associated state tax rebate as long as we stay at or below that 3.14% limit. The other option, which I, I'm gonna be bold here and say this is not under consideration at any point, uh, propose a budget with a tax levy above a prescribed level. This used to be referred to commonly as piercing the cap, requiring a super majority, 60% approval in the community. And not only that, residents would not be eligible for that state tax rebate. And I do wanna point out here that the 3.14% is simply a calculated tax levy limit. It does not prescribe, it does not insist that the board adopt a tax levy, a tax levy with that increase associated with it. If they choose option number one, they can propose at or they can adopt at or well below or somewhere in between as the budget drafts dictate and the conversations move forward.
So Jim, with the 566,000, for example, uh, which is carryover from last year, if we adopt a budget below the 3.1, uh, whatever, four.
Correct.
If we, if we don't, uh, adopt something lower than that, I'm sorry. That 566, how does that play in so we don't necessarily lose that? Because otherwise it goes away if we don't use it this year, correct?
Every, every year, it's a different situation. So if the board adopts below a tax levy limit this year, whatever that, that number is below, that's next year's carryover. So if that number below is $100,000, then technically the 466 difference would, would not be incorporated into next year's tax levy limit.
Right, but the 566 would be somewhere calculated in there that we would be utilizing it one way or another, no matter what, correct?
Correct. Every year, regardless of the situation, if a board adopts at a number below that limit, the carryover is only, is only the difference between the actual limit and how much you're below that given year. So the 566,420 only applies from this year to next year.
Right, but again, like I'm saying, is that, that 566 we're going to more than likely utilize this year, even if we come in below the tax levy limit, correct? Am I asking the question incorrectly possibly? In other words, that 566, if it gets put into play, let's, we say we came in at one and a half percent, just by way of example. And we add that 566 to the one and a half percent, so now it's whatever percentage. We're still below the allowable growth rate.
Yeah, I mean, the 566 is already worked into the calculation.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not adding or subtracting, so.
It's not additional.
Okay.
Emily hates when I do this, but I'm gonna do it anyway. So if you look at, if you look at, it's hard to see because it's small, but the tax levy limit, it's about a third of the way up the page. Right on top of that, the available carryover, that's incorporated into that number.
The 3.14.
So it's, yeah, it's part of that 3.14%.
Right, but if we came in at 2.5.
Then whatever the difference between 2.5 and 3.14 is, that's next year's carryover.
Right.
It's helping us carry a bigger amount over because the half a million that we added in this year.
Right. So, so tech, technically, if, if you were.
That's my point.
If you were adopting a tax levy at the same exact number below next year as, as this year, so 566,420 below for eighteen nineteen, the carryover would be identical this year to next year.
Got it.
But technically, that carryover has to be determined on an annual basis. And there are some other factors that, that may lower that or raise that depending on how you, on how you work the calculation here. But, uh, there, there is a piece of it that would be lost, but, you know, again, because we had so much to carry or, or enough, we're, we're in a rare situation here. I don't think there are that many districts that are actually that far below. There's a couple of millions and, millions and more. But most districts are somewhere between where we are, we, we fell this year and being at the limit. For the most part, if you're below, it's gonna carry over to the next year just in a, with, with different dollars per se. Okay. So what we also typically do at this, at this time is look at some of the executive budget proposal highlights that are going to impact the process moving forward. Now recall that the governor has released his proposal. This is going to be legislatively discussed for the next month and a half. And we do hope for an on-time budget by April 1st so we can do what we need to do in, in our final planning stages before we present the final, uh, final draft of board adoption. So a couple of things to look at here that are relevant to us as a school district and relevant to us in Huntington. Foundation aid. I think I mentioned a couple of weeks ago in Newsday, they listed every school district on Long Island and the amount of aid increase from this year to next year. And they listed us at about $335,000 and change. It's meaningless because a lot of that was in the next category of aid that I'm gonna show you. The only real important number here is the increase in foundation aid because it's the only general pool of money that we get to use for whatever we want to use it for to support students and programs. That's why I list it as the only true discretionary aid category. Uh, and you can see there, his proposal, it's governed. And you can see there, his proposal, that's Governor Cuomo, called for a three hundred and thirty-eight million increase statewide. No changes to the formula, which has been advocated for for years. And that three thirty-eight includes fifty million community, community school set aside, which has nothing to do with the Huntington School District because we're looked at as too wealthy. Each district was guaranteed at least a point two five percent increase over seventeen, eighteen in his proposal. And that is exactly what he has proposed giving us, and that amounts to twenty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. That is it. And honestly, I don't care what Newsday states, this is the only aid increase that we actually have access to for any purpose that we choose. The rest of the increase presented in that chart was a number of expense-based aids. And I tried to frame this in a manner that was as easily understandable as possible. These are aids. You simply get back over time a portion of what you spend on specific items. So you wanna get more expense-based aid, spend more in those categories. That's not real aid. His proposal called for a hundred and eighty-five in total statewide. Now includes charter school transitional aid, which doesn't help any public school. And he's also proposed a two percent cap moving forward for BOSEs and transportation aid increases. And that will make a difference for districts, certainly on Long Island and across the state for that matter. So again, what we're looking at here in his proposal is twenty-two thousand, four fifty-two more than we currently have in state aid. Another important category of aid, building aid. We do get a portion back on our.
Jim, to clarify though, that two percent cap on the BOSEs and transportation is not this budget year.
That's correct. It is for the twenty nineteen, twenty budget cycle. And it's gonna be the same for building aid as well. I see I left the aid ratio out here. Our aid ratio is typically around forty percent. It's a moving target. Building aid is also an expense-driven category. It is determined based on how much capital, how much capital project work we do during a given year. His proposal calls for a hundred and seventy-six million statewide. He has also proposed, starting in nineteen, twenty, a two percent statewide cap. Now, this is an interesting one because what they are looking at is how much the increase in building aid is statewide. And even if ours only went up by a fraction of a percent, if the total cap statewide was over two percent, we'd still be impacted proportionately by that statewide cap. This does not help a district like Huntington that's doing a lot of its work through capital reserve funding. And again, our aid ratio, it's not listed up there. It's typically, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Zach, around thirty-eight, forty percent?
Yeah, a little bit more, thirty-eight, thirty-six.
Okay, and that, and that also comes back to us over time. Other aids in his proposal, pre-K, competitive grants. He's been focused on this for a while, and I keep hearing the question, well, pre-kindergarten, focus, focus, focus. We still have districts in New York State that don't have full-day kindergarten. There's not many of them, but they do exist. The Empire State After-School Program, that was the program that the Governor touted for low-wealth districts and districts in at-risk communities. Early college high schools, nine million. Expanded Advanced Placement Access, six million. That includes fee waivers. And a Breakfast After the Bell Program, which I'll get to in a little bit more detail moving, moving forward down this, down this presentation.
Jim, I did read though that he is offering also an incentive for those few low-down school districts that don't have full-day kindergarten to, there was something I read in the, in the, something incentive, to incentivize them.
To incentivize it, but not mandate it, which is still something that we've been waiting for.
Can we assume that this position that we are in as a district that people really have access to any of these aid funds? Because we don't, that's not developing.
No, we won't. I'll show you why. I have it, I have it coming up. I think it's, it's gotta be a seventy percent free and reduced lunch.
So I don't, so not, so basically, even if we had programs that we wanted to start that fell within these categories, we don't have the, we don't fall into like the aid of old.
No. And again, it's back to our combined wealth ratio. It remains to be seen whether or not we could take advantage of a piece of that Empire State After-School Program. He hasn't really defined who's what within that. But if it's, again, if it's based on wealth and wealth alone, we're not going to be, no. This is always something that troubles the masses. Seven hundred and sixty-nine million in proposed aid, and it's hard to see. But if you look at, Long Island is sitting at twelve percent of that package. And we, Hous, down here, we educate about seventeen percent of the kids. So this is something that we on Long Island have been advocating for or against, whichever way you wanna look at it. It's just not fair. A campaign for fiscal equity suit still gets thrown, thrown about in terms of New York, New York City getting more and more. The upstate districts think that we're independently wealthy down here and that we get more than our fair share. They actually, we're actually supporting, we're paying for part of their children's education upstate. And we don't want this to be a region-by-region tit-for-tat in New York State. But the fact is, Long Island gets twelve percent, we house seventeen percent of the kids.
And we pay how much of the, of the taxes we pay?
And those taxes, not, not every, twelve, that's right, not every penny that we spend down here goes to educate our own kids. And that's, that's where people get a little upset and can't say that I blame them.
And that falls on deaf ears to the Senators.
And we know we've brought that up every year. Special education, another area that he focused on. He's looking at a new formula that is going to reduce reimbursement for summer programs in most districts at this point. He's got a new formula in place that has an approved tuition expense multiplied by a state-sharing ratio and looking at that in more detail. That is certainly not going to help us. There are also waivers from certain duties if implementing alternative special education programs. These have to be approved by the state before that, that'll take hold. I don't know how generous they're gonna be there, but that would not amount to a great deal of financial savings regardless. All right, there it is, child nutrition. He's taken a stance on lunch shaming plans. Obviously, we have adopted in Huntington a new policy on school lunch and breakfast that does include a component, the policy itself, on how we will maintain student dignity and how we will address students who can't pay on a given, on a given day or overtime. That is worked into that policy. The Breakfast After the Bell Program, seventy percent or higher, free and reduced. And that money, that twelve million, that's seven million from a capital allocation and a five million, a seven million capital allocation in terms of infrastructure and five million in terms of meals, we are not eligible. And this is one that'll interest you, Mrs. Rogan, an increased reimbursement rate for districts that purchase thirty percent of their food from in-state growers or producers. Yep, and that, Whitson's, that'll be a conversation with our food service provider. And it'll make a difference, but how much will soon be determined. And again, our school lunch program works on, it's basically supposed to be self-sustaining, and it has been very close to that over the years. We wanna keep it there. He addressed school bus safety. Authorizes districts to purchase installed school bus safety cameras. That has to be authorized by Boards of Education via resolution. Camera expenses are not part of our transportation aid process. Other legal issues here, partnering with local law enforcement may receive all or a portion of the two fifty fine imposed on drivers who illegally pass school buses, and the revenue received for the fines can pay for the cameras. So this is an ongoing, this is gonna morph over time. But as you can see, there's been a lot of attention paid recently to automobiles passing stop school buses that are flashing and have the stop sign out. He is addressing that in this component of his proposal.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Why have Boards of Education authorize and adopt it? Why not just have bus companies install it? Like, why does that come back to us as a district? Shouldn't it be a bit? Well, and so I'm saying, bus companies.
Some school districts have their own buses, too.
It would not, it would not be the first time that something was passed on to school districts that shouldn't be. Right, and, and this, this may also differ for a district like us that contracts out all of its buses. Yep, absolutely. Okay. Early learning, fifteen million, and some of this was mentioned earlier in less detail. Fifteen million to expand pre-K for three- and four-year-olds in high-needs districts. And this has nothing to do with our UPK aid allocation. We still get the same three hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and three dollars in UPK that we have for a number of years. And he's also got on the docket here, establishing a childcare task force to examine access to affordable childcare. He also mentioned, in details yet to, well, details will follow, instructional program for eighth and ninth graders to promote awareness of and respect for diversity. And also, he has mentioned, I think for the first time, the recovery high schools. And you've heard that mentioned at our legislative breakfast. These high schools would be run by local BOSEs, one or two or three throughout the state for students who are recovering from some form of addiction and need full-service community schooling. And I think they're, they're looking at them as five-year agreements to establish, to establish them with BOSEs. This has received some negative feedback as well. Doesn't apply to us, but it's interesting nonetheless. School-level funding plans for the current, I'm sorry, for next school year, it applies to the big five city school districts. In nineteen, twenty, it would apply to school districts with at least nine schools collectively receiving at least half of their funding or revenue from state aid. Obviously, we have only eight schools, and we don't receive anywhere near half our funding, half our revenue from state aid. But these districts involved must submit and publish a funding allocation breakdown for each school to the Commissioner and the Department of Budget. It's a lot to ask in this day and age. They've gotta explain a way, or at least justify how they are equitably treating each and every one of their schools financially. And it's, what they're asking for is quite a bit of paperwork. And the, I guess the biggest criticism here is, is it really going to impact anything on a positive basis? Or is it going to give them, and these are districts, some of whom are having some struggles to begin with, a lot more busy work to do that take away from the time that they need to spend planning for kids. And what they're saying now is, if they don't do this, they would be ineligible for aiding increases over the previous aid year without that approved report, and that's.
This, like, it seems to me that this would need to ensure that in one school district, maybe know about the ineptitude of wealth on Long Island, right?
This is within one school district.
Right, so I'm saying perhaps in some school districts, there is a big difference between schools and resources. And so maybe that's, I'm just picking up ideas.
I think it applies most to the big five city districts. I mean, you're talking about New York City with schools, schools all over the place. Outside of that, there are two on Long Island that come to mind. I don't know if I need to mention them here, but they are, it's the biggest district in Suffolk and the biggest district in Nassau. And both are getting hit with this, and both are having their own problems at this point. And, and the question is, is this really going to make a difference? Correct. But this is the first time I've seen anything like this in any budget proposal.
These are just his proposals. These aren't.
Correct. Some of these are gonna be bargained away. Some of them will be the legislative pork barreling that takes place over the next, next couple of weeks, et cetera. All right, we have other things you may have seen or heard about. There has been suggestion that the Governor is interested in taking away the state income tax and replacing it with a payroll tax and charitable contributions in lieu of state income tax and potentially local property taxes. These things have yet to be fully developed. And then also manipulating the STAR rebates, freeze them to amounts from the previous year, beginning in the next school year, and make STAR Income Verification Program mandatory. That has come up before. And this other piece, and we've, we've had to actually go through the MWBE process for various federal grants that we've applied for over the past couple of years. And basically, what we do there is we guarantee that we are using vendors that hire a percentage of minority and women employees. And this is something that, that a lot of our grant processes, not only at the federal level, but at the state level at this point, have to be in adherence with. So at this point, we hope to have a first draft of the budget in the Board's hands in about a week. And that overview will be presented on February, February twenty-sixth, and March twelfth, March twenty-sixth. And April ninth will be follow-up presentations. I believe March twenty-sixth is the, the big one on instruction and staffing. The twelfth is the capital and benefits codes. Next week will be the central administration and transport, not next week, the twenty-sixth will be the central administration and the transportation-specific cost centers that, that'll be analyzed. March one, assuming we don't receive any information to the contrary, our tax levy limit calculation is what it is. It'll be submitted to the state controller before that point. April sixteenth, as I mentioned before, Board adoption. Public hearing has to be between seven and fourteen days before the vote, and the vote and election on the fifteenth of May. Questions? Okay.
I think I'm shedding a little tear.
No.
Yeah, right.
Is everybody good, or do you have any questions?
I asked mine, so I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
I just, I actually do have one really quick question.
Sorry, the time's expired.
Sorry, we already left. We already went by.
Have we, I know it's come up over the years, but have we given any more thought, big picture, to community schools or developing some aspect of that in our school district at some point? Like, we've talked about it, like, having resources, I mean.
Shared resources.
I'm not gonna say we're not, we have pieces in place that could be considered components of community schools.
Right, 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 right.
But I'm not sure if everybody knows what a community school actually is. It's a full-service facility.
Right, so it takes a school building and provides alternative social determiner of health, like, other services that families might not be able to access readily in another way. So when we have children who, you know, we have a population of free and reduced lunch students approaching fifty percent. So some of those families may be in crisis in terms of being able to access, you know, physicals for their children, dental visits, whatever. So a lot of those things are barriers for kids to be successful in school. So in some areas where the, the need is even greater, they have created these sort of, the, the, the school building's still functioning as a school building, but in addition, there might be access to a doctor in that building that's separate from the school physician and access to a dentist. And it's, it's just another way of partnering with people in the community to provide better and additional resources to families that need them. And I'm not saying that we definitely need that. I just know it has come up in conversation over the course of the years. And I'm just wondering, you know, if, if we're not at that point, then.
Well, we're not at that point.
Okay.
In practice, that's for sure, but what I will tell you is that what I've seen over the years is an expansion in terms of the community partners that we have. They may not be located in the building.
Right.
But there certainly are relationships that we now have with outside entities that perform some of the services and things or entities that we link people up with because we can, so that they can secure some of those services.
Adding those two liaisons, I think, was a great, was a great step.
Absolutely, and, you know, we have a lot of partnerships with the town and county, and, and a lot of those are on the table when a student is or a student's family is in crisis. But yes, the neighborhood aids are absolutely helping in that regard as well.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the twenty eighteen, nineteen Port of Education Meeting Calendar and Resolution for Reorganization.
So this is relatively simple. You see this every year, and this is based on the calendar that was adopted at the last meeting. The only point of discussion here, and I threw something out for your consideration, and that is, by policy, our reorganization meeting is supposed to be scheduled on the first Tuesday in July. That first Tuesday in July is July third. It's attached to a holiday weekend, and I know that has been kicked back my way in the past. It also does not, graduation is June, the end of June. It does not give us a lot of time to prepare for that reorganization meeting. So I've thrown out a proposed July ninth, Monday, July ninth date for your consideration, and that would have to be adopted by resolution.
So can I get a motion to approve both the calendar and reorganization meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Emily and Bill as a second.
She should not be permitted to make that motion.
She doesn't have to because she's not gonna be here.
Does anyone have any questions?
So are, so in this, if we vote, are we voting to say that the resolution meeting will be the ninth?
Yes, or, or discuss an alternative date, and we can manipulate the resolution and adopt with that date. So I threw out the ninth, just speculating that that may be a good date. Monday is typically a board meeting night, and it does provide time after the holiday weekend. If, it has to be, it has to be before the fifteenth, I believe, and the fifteenth is too late.
Barry, you wouldn't have any important things happening on that date, would you?
No.
Jen, you're not going to be on Fire Island.
No, because you guys plan it whenever I plan Fire Island. So this year, I'm planning it after we vote on the stupid meeting.
I actually think you need double the amount of board meetings next year.
I'll be quiet.
Motion in a second.
Let's vote.
All in favor? That's everyone.
Poor Emily has us doubling up on meetings.
Stop going up the works.
Seriously.
Moving on to facility use fee schedule.
Okay.
Question about this.
Long awaited.
So this is, they're obviously drafts at this point.
Sorry. That's the first one.
That is the first one and it should say draft on it. But these have been updated to reflect the fact primarily that there is air conditioning in the high school auditorium that is not, does not come without a cost. We've also changed, if you look at the section on additional fees, to reflect the current wages that are earned by custodial, security, and otherwise. That has to be included in any facility use proposition.
Did this change from yesterday? This chart?
The one-time building use fee had a column in there that didn't belong.
Yes, one-time building. Thank you. Okay, because that was going to be my question. I'm like, what is that one? So, okay, now my question's-
Yeah, there was a notation in there that should have been taken out.
Okay.
And it has been.
All right. So, see? I keep watching.
Mrs. Ackerman, would you like to? No.
No, no, sorry. Just know that-
All right, now, I will make a suggestion here because this does also accompany, or should accompany, a change in the facility use policy.
Yeah.
This can be something that you look at as a first read.
That's a good idea.
And we can bring it back at the next meeting because I'd like you to have a chance to digest it. I did include the two drafts that are proposed. I included the currently existing schedules in both cases, so you can compare. And I also attached, for your reference and for anybody's reference, that is, the existing policy and regulation. So what I'll suggest is this really should go together. That's why I believe I have notated it somewhere as a first read or final. First read would make sense.
Is it competitive with other districts?
Yes. Now, you want to speak to that?
So we're still relatively charging less than many districts, but we are competitive. That's why you see that it's now greater than 65, you know, the 65.
Oh, that's a good point, thank you.
We're paying from 50 to make more community-based activities. And that's what all the districts around us have. Nobody ahead of 50 percent anymore.
Okay.
60 or 65 percent. We went from a flat fee to an hourly fee because when people came in, they would stay longer than the four hours, five hours, six hours, seven hours. And we never, we cooked those monies. So it's an hourly fee with a minimum of four hours. Plus with the air conditioning, we have to make sure it's a minimum of four hours because it takes an hour or two for it to get to the preferred temperature. A lot of big people have been asking, use the air conditioning at Finley. That's why we added the AC charge to Finley as well. Some of the summer programs that use our facility want the air on when grandparents come to watch a show. So, you know, we've just tried to, and also the salaries, you know, need to be updated based on our collective bargaining agreements. And the technology component, we never charged for, but we pay somebody to be there if they need it. So we've added that piece to it as well to make sure, you know, that our expenses are addressed, not 100 percent covered, but definitely addressed.
So you didn't feel there was a need to segregate the nonprofit outside groups from the for-profit outside groups from a cost perspective?
Not if they have less than 65 percent of the people, not the community.
That's the levels.
Got it.
These numbers, they signify the amount that would be paid for the entire four hour, or hour.
We don't have to an hourly rate.
Okay, no, I've seen that.
It's like a flat fee rate. And then-
Well, it says all fees-
Based on per session.
Per session and based on four, this is for four hours and then an extra hour will be four days.
Right, that's the four hours and then it will be per reading from that point.
Oh, okay. So the numbers that I'm seeing though-
For four hours.
That's how it's calculated.
Okay.
That's four hours.
That's for the four, that's, okay, that's what I, thank you for clarifying. Because I was like, holy cow, they're going to be paying a lot of money for four hours if they want air conditioning.
So the air conditioning in the high school auditorium, we're charging $200 for four hours, but essentially five because you say it takes about an hour to get it going.
Well, we're not going to be, they have to be there for four hours. Like, turn on and you get the four hours of cold.
I got you.
But actually, yes, we're running it to get it up to the temperature, it takes about an hour.
What does it cost us to turn on for four hours, that air conditioning?
Barry will come over and turn it off.
George, what is that?
Twenty-five dollars per hour each unit.
What is it?
Eight. Twenty-five dollars per hour each unit. So it's about $50 bucks an hour, five, 10, 15, 20.
Which is where they pay $200.
Wait, I think we're charging more.
That doesn't include any replacement parts or anything that may break, right?
I think we should charge more.
Actually, seriously, Kathy, if, if, if they have to finish at the end of the four hours anyway, could you turn it off a half hour before that, you know, at three and a half hours, you know? Because you kind of want to get them out anyway.
Right, right, right.
I mean, is that something you could, I don't, no, seriously. It's still, it's still there. Why is that funny?
I just thought you were in it.
It makes you sound very frugal.
Again, this is just for discussion. If we want to increase the number of hours that we're putting for the air conditioning in high school.
We can brighten the exit signs as well.
No, I'm always saying, if you're-
You know, air conditioning better than I do. If we shut off after three hours, will they remain cool for that last hour?
It all depends on the weather and what type of heat we have. I mean, if you have a lunch, you just say like a plate without a pot.
Especially if they think they're paying more.
Well, then I think we should think about charging more.
This is, this is not, these are not lofty fees. I mean, I think that's what we're getting at. And I do want to, what the board has done in the past is, at every reorganization meeting, you approve facility users, you've given us discretion, you've given me discretion to evaluate individual applications. And it's been working and, you know, there are some, there are some entities that we work with. I just want to make it clear in the mind that the custodial, the security, the technologies, question comes up often. If we had a group in and it's not our group and had to bring in custodial security to service that group, we can't cover those costs no matter what. If we did, it would be a gift of public funds. We have to be careful with that, make sure that our groups understand that, even if the board agrees to waive a fee for a particular outside group that services 95 percent of our kids and has financial challenges. And we try and schedule them so it may be at a time where our custodial or security staff are already here. Because then it's not constituting a gift of public funds. But these fees, relatively speaking, are not particularly high and, yeah, that could be something that's considered.
I think Xavier brought up a good point, though, about not, about adding a little bit more onto the air conditioning fees for maintenance.
For maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, even if it's $25, you know, it's something that the part goes if we have to make, do whatever. It's just, I don't, I don't think you're-
Wear, tear.
Wear and tear.
But you just can't accrue those monies.
I understand that. It's, I know it's hard to determine that, but, you know.
Right, right. So if we get that extra $25, we have to spend that $25 in that year. You know, we can't say, like, it's not-
Is there an annual maintenance cost to it?
It's not like a pair reserve, you know, reserve.
But is there an annual, but is there an annual maintenance cost to it? Is there filters that need to be replaced? Are there, you know, those types of things that need to be done to it?
That we can increase, we have to increase.
We can estimate.
I'm just, yeah, I just think it's a valid point, that's all.
Oh, yeah.
And you're just talking about the two auditoriums, so with the auditorium and the LGI at this point.
I know, at one point, you did talk about adding a repair maintenance fee to this. And again, we're like, well, you don't get to use it that year, so, but we can look into adding that.
Is there a service contract to these air conditioning units that we have to pick?
We do.
Are there filters yearly that need to be replaced?
We just have to change them three times a year. Twelve dollars in a year. I can get your price on what they cost. Maybe that's a better number. So you don't have to have the change.
So if we can get an estimated cost of what those annual expenses are?
That would be good because we could work in some price.
Something.
We'll work on that.
So we can present this on the 26th. It can, putting everything together, it can be looked at then as a final, or you could even carry it over to March 12th, just to get it right. But let's, let's get the updated numbers, update the policy as well, and put it all on the next agenda.
Sounds like a good plan.
That's good.
Very good.
Moving on to curriculum and instruction, and Ms. McCoy. Oh, wait, did I miss something?
CPSC and-
It's a first read, yeah.
No, we're just going to-
Yeah.
Treat, it's not really a first read, we're just going to treat it as-
Like a discussion.
Discussion.
It's not the policy in itself, so no motion.
Moving on to Ms. McCoy.
Okay. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approves CSC CPSC submissions as delineated.
So can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Jen and Xavier as a second. All in favor? And is everyone?
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education approve the proposed modification to the course of study in seventh grade mathematics starting in the 2018-19 school year.
Could I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Jen?
I'll second it.
Emily, second. And I'm sure we have some discussion. So anyone would like to start?
Well, I unfortunately had, I was away when you had the meeting of, you do it every time. So I, A, wanted to ask, you know, did you have good attendance? Did you have a lot of questions? Did you get follow-up feedback after the meeting? Things like that.
Nothing, you got nothing.
Because he looks at me like he wants to kill me every time I ask a question. So he's doing it now.
I don't know what you're talking about. We did have, I'm going to say about 75 people at the meeting. It was well-attended. I always would love to have more attendance at any meeting that we have in district. Some great questions asked, some good discussion. I think it was a healthy dialogue. We've received a handful of questions and comments after the fact. We've shared further information, shared additional research. We've got a lot of thoughts going in multiple directions here. You know, my concern, and I expressed it at the end of the parent meeting, is that sometimes information is skewed when it is thrown about on social media with, without any connection or communication with district administrators who might be able to explain it a little bit better. And that surely happened this time around. I was able to speak to some of the people who were not able to be at the meeting but responded to some of what they saw incorrectly labeled via sites that we have no access to. And again, those were healthy discussions as well. And I think the piece that we wanted people to realize most is that, you know, we want to make sure that kids have opportunities here. We want to make sure that we have kids who are enriched and we want to make sure that we have kids who are supported. And we do believe that the proposal on the table does all of that.
Right. And I agree with that as well. I do have similar concerns to Ms. Martin, I believe it was, because I'm all for setting a high bar for everyone, but making sure that it's realistic that some that, that it doesn't come, math does not come naturally to them, where they do struggle with it, that they, that the teachers will really have the resources and the knowledge to support them in a way to help and to make sure that they succeed. Because, you know, seventh, eighth grade, you're mentally, you know, less mature than you are in ninth or 10th grade. And there's some that are going to be able to flourish and do great, but, I mean, I was a horrible math student and I look at, it's shocking, right? But I, and I worry, like, you know, somebody that struggles with math, are they, are they realistically, are the teachers going to have the tools to really support them so that they'll achieve as well?
One of the things that came up at the meeting, and we had actually some parents in the room who happened to have been math teachers, the, there is a difference between the current Common Core Math 8 and the Algebra I curricula, but we are not talking about a huge massive difference between the two. That was one fallacy that I think we, to a certain extent, we, we didn't help that by continuing to use the word accelerated. And I think that's just become an accepted topic, that if you bring a typical ninth-grade course into the eighth grade, that you are accelerating. And it's not a misnomer and I guess it's accurate to a certain extent, but the piece that's missed in all that is the entire shift in curriculum from sixth through eighth to help support this. And the other piece that was commonly mislabeled was the Math VII Second Alternating Day period as a math lab or a support period. No, it's not that. It is a, it is an instructional period designed to help put our kids in the best position possible to succeed in the eighth grade course. We've done some curriculum manipulation to date, but not, I don't believe we've done enough. So even if this were not to move forward, I think we'd still need to address some of that to put the kids who are currently taking Algebra I into that position we'd like them to be.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. What happens if there are a handful of students for whom this is just not workable? Is there, is there some kind of safety net or an alternative for, you know, because there may be kids that, no matter how much support they get, you know, for whom this may or may not work. I mean, we won't know until we try, but I just want to make sure that there would be a safety net for those kids because, speaking to, the point that was raised before about putting undue stress on our students, I want our students to, you know, hit every possible success that they can, but I don't want to stress them out unduly on the way there.
For some, there may be an additional support period even beyond that alternating day, maybe where they would have that second period every day for those with IEPs who warrant that. And students who are weak math students, again, we do believe that the way we're shifting this curriculum would work in their favor. There are students now who face that same challenge and, you know, our goal is to provide them with as much support as possible and opportunity for that extra, extra push from all angles. So it, it's different in that the curriculum would be shifting, but it's also not different in that we address those situations as individually and as best we can now.
Also, I have one more question, as long as I've got the floor. You know, I think there's a value, you know, we used to think about learning as being very linear, so you learned this in this grade and this in this grade and this in this grade. Will they be circling back around, like, from sixth through seventh and then seventh through eighth, so that the topics that they touched on in sixth grade are covered will be given another, you know what I mean?
That's part of the-
I'm doing a terrible job explaining what I'm trying to say.
You're talking about spiraling.
I'm talking about spiraling, thank you. I couldn't think of the word, but yes, that's exactly what I'm talking about because I think there's a, truthfully, a tremendous value in that spiraling. I think that sometimes, you know, you lay the foundation in one grade and then when you come back around to it, suddenly the kids can understand it in more depth or in more breadth, depending on, you know, which way you're going. But I would like to see that because I think math especially is the kind of thing that if you learn it once and then you go past and you really didn't get it that first time, you get lost and then you're, you know, it's the kind of thing where I think it can snowball on you if you're somebody who's not inclined to be, you know, like that on math. So is there any thought to that or is that part of the way it will be organized?
The sixth grade statistics unit is a perfect example of that. And that's, you know, where these topics are, where the moving pieces are going.
Yeah.
It's not all seventh, eighth grade moving to seventh grade, seventh grade moving to sixth grade, ninth grade moving to eighth grade. And I think that's where the concept of acceleration can confuse.
Yeah, because it seems like you're just gonna leave it behind and keep going, you know?
No, we've taken the pieces and we've shifted them into places where it's as spiraled as it can be, and there is some building on foundation.
Actually, I like that.
And I will tell you that Ms. Ophiero and, and her staff and Ms. McCoy did a lot of work in that regard to make sure that they hit as much of that as possible. And I believe at the last meeting, Bill had mentioned, well, moving forward, would it be prudent to reevaluate where this piece now falls into 7th grade and maybe move it down to 6th grade or move this piece back up, because it makes more sense for it to be there, and that's gonna be an ongoing evaluative process, so that this will be as facilitated as it can be.
Thank you.
I've heard from families who have students that are coming up, concerns on both sides, you know, there's pros and there's cons to, to this program. As an ELL myself, I remember that mathematics was the universal language. I was able to understand the numbers, the pluses, the minuses, a lot easier than the conjugation of the English language. But we still have ELL students that may struggle as they're coming in, and they're, and they're gonna go through this program. How do we address some of those ELL students that just don't understand the language?
And I'll, I'm gonna hit that from both ends there. If you have a student who is brand new to the district and maybe brand new to the country, there haven't been, I'm gonna say huge numbers of those, those students recently, but they come in, if they are entering or emerging L students, they would be entitled, Part 154 regulations require us to put them in that bilingual setting, so the, the adaptation for them may be a little bit different than what we're talking about here, and that's, that's our obligation, it's something that we need to do to help support those students. On the other side of this, and this is one of the concerns that has led us to this point, is there may be that English language learner who is clearly capable, and as you mentioned, a universal language that has not had the opportunity in the past to get to this point, that will now be given that opportunity. So, we've got a, it'll be based on their English language levels, which are determined by the NICE lab, and it'll also be addressed by the individual evaluations that our staff does on each and every one of these kids, it has to be an individualized approach.
And in weighing these pros and cons, in my mind, I really think that the pros outweigh the cons. I have great confidence in our staff that they won't let kids slip through, through the cracks. I have great confidence in our staff and, and in yourself and in your administration that you are gonna make this program succeed, and, and that's why I would be in favor for it.
And I will tell you that, that the important.
I'm sorry, there is equality in education, is what I was looking at.
Equity.
In education, that's really what I was looking for.
Hundred percent, and we have, we have used that term repeatedly, because in, in the districts that we visited and the districts that we've spoken to, that equity piece was more of an issue for some than for others, but for us, we wanna put kids on equitable playing fields, but also provide individual students with the support that they need. And we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to look at this during, we're gonna have to do a, a formative assessment of the program, we're gonna have to do a summative assessment for the program, of the program, and we're gonna have to make adjustments as, as our students dictate. And I can tell you that the people in this room that I'm looking at are committed to doing that.
So, I have a couple of thoughts. You know, I've listened very carefully, I was at the meeting, I've listened to the administration. I was actually a little disappointed and troubled, someone pointed me to a Facebook group that I have not been spending, I don't try not to spend too much time, but, and there was a lot of misrepresentation, not just of this initiative, but of the people behind the initiative, and that really kind of made me sad and broke my heart, because, you know, one of the things that I know in almost twelve years of being on this board, and particularly in the last seven years, is that we don't make decisions to hurt kids. We make decisions well thought out, researched, after tireless conversations among our staff, that this board isn't even privy to, because that's not our job. And so, the, the assumption that somehow there was mal-intent and that this is about the district generating certain numbers, or that it wasn't about kids, that really broke my heart to read, and because I know that we don't make decisions like that ever in this district. And we put kids first, and we are led by a Superintendent of Schools who, again, I have watched your decision-making process, and you don't take something like this, which will be a big change lightly. And it's not some fly-by-night, like, let's just throw acceleration out there and see how it sticks. So, I just wanna say that I am not an educator. I am passionate about education, but we hire you, and we hire the people that you hire and choose to make decisions and make recommendations, and it doesn't mean that we rubber stamp it, it doesn't mean we don't ask good questions, but at the end of the day, it is not my job to tell you what educationally is in the best interest for our kids. That is also to say, I think you spoke to a really important piece, that this is not like we're just dumping everything into a tube, we're sending everything off, and then we're never looking at it again. You know, there's gonna be adjustments, there's gonna be individual situations, there's gonna be ways that we're gonna have to be flexible. You know, I appreciated what Mr. Graber brought up earlier today. I personally am not the strongest math student, but I kind of wish somebody had not built into my head and given me the mindset that I wasn't a good math student. I wish somebody had given me a different set of belief systems about my abilities. And when we talk in this district about mindsets, and we do a lot, you know, we have to also realize that some kids may just step up and flourish and accelerate and surprise us all, but if we don't even take the chance, and if we don't give them the chance, then we'll never know that. So, I am going to vote in favor of this, and anybody that knows this Board of Education and this administration and the individual people here, none of us make decisions to hurt kids. We do make decisions to be educationally supportive and to help them grow, and I know, and I won't be on this board, but you will reflect, and you will look, and you will make decisions accordingly as we see how this works, but I think by not taking this chance, we're not modeling for our kids what we try to tell them all the time, which is you gotta take a chance, you gotta try something. So, I just wanna go on record as saying that I really appreciate what you're doing, and I also appreciate the parents' concerns, and I understand it, but let's see what happens, and let's try this.
You know, I've had a number of really productive conversations with parents who have contacted me, I know Ms. McCoy, and I believe Ms. Ophiero, I've had those same types of conversations, I've been delegating a lot of those conversations to them, because I know they can speak to them with, with fidelity, and the misinformation is out there. I, I have not heard what you just said, but I'm just trying to figure out how possibly kids not doing well could generate any form of positive numbers, that doesn't make any sense to me at all, and I will leave it, leave it at that. And, you know, one of the things, you know, I wanna make sure that, that this board knows, and I'm gonna say it, because there's a number of people in the audience, one of the things that we do, and this is one of my foremost responsibilities, to make sure that the people sitting at this table have a full complement of information. The only thing they can accuse the administration of here is giving them too much, and they know that, and I wanna give them information that supports and give them information that, that would very possibly go in the other direction, just so a well-educated and informed decision can be made. So, anybody accusing this board of rubber stamping is, is, is off, is off key, I'll leave it at that.
Well, to that note, I had written down a few things that I wanted to say, because I wanted to make sure I said them all, so I wrote them down, and I repeat some of the things that my colleagues have already said, but I know you'll all indulge me for two minutes.
Absolutely.
So, when this was presented at the last meeting, I was one of the people on the board who suggested that, you know, we take more time to consider the proposal, to get some information and to seek input from the community. And so, in that time, I and others have attended public meetings through the PTA and that the administration have held, and I've heard the administration's presentations of the changes with the specifics, and I've heard the questions that the community has asked. Well, I've heard some questions, some I've heard through the grapevine, some I saw things on Facebook that I don't respond to on Facebook, but that's why I'm making this statement now. So, the main concern that I heard was the concern we heard tonight, which is about the students with, for whom math is a relative weakness, and how can we expect those students to succeed at an accelerated pace when they're already struggling at the pace we have now? And this was an initial concern for, for me as well, most of you know, I'm a parent of special education students, both whom actually are strong in math, but still, like, relative to their other, to their other strengths. So, what I did was I, I called some other districts that had acceleration to find out what was working there and what wasn't, and the things that I heard when I inquired were all the things that our administration is putting in place. I wish I had, I wish we did, and these are the things that they obviously investigated as well and built the model around, so I just wanted to say how much I appreciated that. So, did I come to the conclusion after all this that this is the perfect situation for all of our students? Of course not. No, there's no situation that's gonna be perfect for all our students. But I do think that if we look at the question of if it's gonna improve outcomes and raise the level of learning for our students, the answer to that question seems to be yes. And so, for that reason, I would be in favor of the proposal. The trick is, of course, gonna be to make sure that we make the adjustments that we've been talking about here, and to keep an eye on everything, to make sure that no one is slipping through. I just wanted to say that one of the reasons that I'm really in favor of is because I believe there are too many children that are either not encouraged to take challenging coursework, or the courses, or courses are not offered in a manner that fits their learning style. I have been asking the district for years to add ICT accelerated classes for learners whose IEPs put them in co-taught settings. This is something that's been missing from our district this whole time, meaning if your child is in an integrated co-taught class through their IEP, they either had to choose not to be in accelerated or to stay in their co-taught class. You couldn't have the benefit of your co-taught teacher and be in an accelerated program. If you, if any of, I'm going off task, I'm going off script here now, but if any of you know students, for example, with autism or other disabilities, sometimes math, take my family for example, could be one of their strengths, but yet their learning needs require them to have this extra teacher, this special education teacher who's gonna differentiate the instruction for them. It wasn't available, and now this program will finally allow that to happen, so I think that is one of the major things. Also, there are lots of students in our school, schools who have never been told, either through home or through school or anywhere else, that they can do this, or can succeed in a harder or more challenging curriculum. And it will be so important for these students to hear that they can. It's much easier, I feel like, to dial it back to the student, to, to make the arrangements for the students, for the students that aren't gonna be able to succeed at it, but it'll be so important for the students to hear that they can. So, I just wanted to say one more thing, and it echoes what Emily was saying. I wanted to point out that I, you know, and all of us, we don't vote yes without important, giving it significant thought and independent thought. And I, but I also wanna point out that my vote is directly influenced by the recommendation of the administration. This is an administration that I trust, and we all chose Mr. Polansky to be our educational leader. I, I'm not an educator, I'm an attorney. I have children, I help guide them in their education, but I come from a family of educators, doesn't make me an educator. And Mr. Polansky has chosen the people on his team, and we have hired them, and it's our job to ask questions and make sure that we have understood the angles, that they have looked at all these issues before coming to their decisions. So, I've done that, and now I feel comfortable in making the decision, and it'll just be all of our obligation to make sure that we continue to watch it going forward and, and help to make adjustments that are needed to make it successful, and that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a little different spin. I prefer not to call it accelerated, oh, there we go, I got the furrowed brow. I prefer not to call it accelerated.
I've been telling him for weeks to not call it.
No, it's adjusting expectations is really all it is, and I don't think it's wrong to expect more from our students and to support them along the way. So, you know, right now, relative to our current curriculum, this will ultimately end up being accelerated, but after three or four years, it will be the curriculum, and it will just be that we are expecting more out of our students by the time we get them to 8th grade. And I expect that we will support them along the entire spectrum as we are currently doing now. With that said, I'm all for math, cool, but we're adding additional instructional time to support this program now. How can we do the same thing in other subjects going forward without making our students stay in school for nine hours a day?
Extended school year? No, it's it.
I'm moving it down so you all know.
It is a challenge, and that's, that's one of the foremost reasons we're focused specifically on, on math at this point, and, and math is a, is a, is a subject that I think Christine, somebody mentioned that, or Emily, that confidence is often the primary barrier, and, and, and the equity piece has been one of the driving forces here, because I think kids get short-changed, and, and one of the questions that came up at the parent meeting had to do with, well, why, if, if this is such a, a great idea, why are we not doing this in English and in social studies and in science? Well, let's do one step at a time here, but English and social studies, no matter what we do at the middle school level, kids have to take four years of English and four years of social studies to graduate. And the kids are in heterogeneous groups in the English, in the humanities domains, so that piece of it is already in place, and kids are succeeding at that, at those levels in those subject areas.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
You may.
In social studies at, at the middle school, we offer things to enrich the social studies world, like National History Day, and, and clubs, and other things that are like accelerated. So, I just wanted to add that, in English, probably, I assume the same, I can't think of it off the top of my head.
So, the, the support piece, the support piece has to be there in every subject area. Here is, here is an area where kids typically lack confidence, so we're focused specifically in that area with this program. But one of the other things that has come up, and it was mentioned earlier today, is, you know, what, what could we do to help put the kids in the best position in terms of our science program? And that, that's, we're a ways off there, but not that far off that we're not considering how we might be able to redesign it to give the kids a chance to experience science differently at the middle level than they experience it now. Is that, does that mean a living environment course? Does that mean that the standard earth science course? There's some, still some work to be done there, but here are the types of things that we're gonna be considering moving forward. Just because we're fo, we're focused specifically on math at this point does not mean that, that, and you know this, Bill, and then everybody else does as well, that we're, we're not always thinking about where the. Best possible, best possible situation lies for the other disciplines as well.
I also just wanted to add that by providing this double period every other day and giving students a different foundation in math than they've had in the past, we're hoping that we actually have less students taking a lab in 8th grade. If they need it, it will be available, but by providing them with that block of time for teachers to truly differentiate, have more hands-on learning time, that students will have a deeper understanding of the mathematical concepts in addition to the work that's being done at the elementary level, so that students are well-prepared in 7th grade to do better even in 8th grade in this algebra course, and perhaps may not need that additional period, which would allow for other options in other subject areas moving forward. The curriculum writing will be key, because we're recreating an entire course in grade 7, and as well as adjusting that grade 6 course. If over the years, the 6th grade teachers and the conversations and the professional development say, we can actually condense this from 7th grade into 6, because it really ties in nicely, and it's, it's one of the units that we're working on that students master pretty well, then that would allow for additional learning in that 7th grade curriculum. And, you know, to provide more time for maybe a concept that is difficult. So, I think in rewriting the curriculum and revisiting it in the conversations with Ms. Ophiero, the plan for next year is to have monthly meetings to talk about how the curriculum is being rolled out in grade 7 and make adjustments throughout the year, rather than waiting even till the end of the year to take a look at it. So, it's a continuous improvement model throughout the year to see where we can make changes and adjustments.
And our, our teachers are familiar with benchmarking, so this is not, this is not new to them, it may be done on a more frequent basis next year, because it's new, but I, I think the, it's been repeated a couple of times at the table tonight, that, that this is not, let's just do this and move on, this is going to come with a lot of eyes, a lot of ears, and a lot of attention, and the feedback from the students in terms of their performance and, and their enjoyment of the subject, which is as important, is, is going to, to drive further which direction that, that we move. And, and, you know, we want kids not only to be proficient in math, but I'd love to see, there are so many opportunities out there in, in, and we talk about STEM all the time, but in, in disciplines that kids tend to shy away from, because, not because they can't do it, and I heard this from at least one of my two children through the years, I can't do math, no, you, you can do math, you just need the, the right foundation, and this is part of building that foundation, and the changes that have been made at the elementary level are, are designed to help build that foundation. So, this is a K through 12 process, and we're looking at a, a small piece of it at this point.
The key is really gonna also be the differentiation, because in this, I mean, in this type of setting with the kids together, it's gonna be important to, especially in math, I think, to make sure that we're presenting it in different ways so that every kid.
Absolutely, and one of, and one of the other concerns that came up during the meeting was an 80-minute block of math. Our kids have, I'll, I'll speak for the 6th graders now, they have 80-minute blocks of math.
Right.
Some of the techniques and strategies, not the content, but there may be some strategies that are used there that will be quite effective at the middle level, and others that may be able to, to move down to the middle level, because they're being fine-tuned by teachers who have a strong content basis in math, and not that our elementary teachers don't, they've done a tremendous amount of preparation to get their kids where they are today. But this, this, like I said, this is a K through 12 process here.
But it also will be important for the students to not get burned out on the math by having those other electives available for them.
Right, and that's why.
The ones that they really wanna choose, like Mr. Graber was saying with the, to make sure that that selection is available.
And that's why I, when you said, I forget who's, and, I'm, I'm not even looking at you, who asked the question about if they're not doing well, how are we supporting them? And you said, well, it may require adding an additional period of support, and then you, then you're kind of thinking like, that, that could be three periods of math for a kid, like, that could burn them out, and then you may lose the enthusiasm, so. And I'm not, and not saying that that's the answer to the question, and I'm sure you guys are going to think of, you know, many different ways in which to support the kids if they are struggling, but, I don't know, maybe three periods in a day would be unrealistic.
It would be, at most, two periods in a day.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
It could be a double, for kids who need it and whose IEPs may dictate it, there may be a double period every day, but the three is...
Right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'll go last. Because I get to listen to everybody's comments, and I echo all of the sentiments that have been expressed by all of you. Therefore, I will not regurgitate them, but just agree with them.
Shall I bear on my brow?
Please.
Yes, please do.
I think that part of being, or this being successful overall, is listening, in all honesty. I think that when this program was first presented to the board, I think it was important that we listened to our parents in the district, so that they could get informed and had the opportunity to get informed before just approving some kind of change like this. And I think what will make this successful moving forward is continuing to listen to, I hate to say, the James Grabers of the world, and other parents in our district-
Is it more than one?
-that bring concerns forward as this program gets rolled out.
Yep.
Because if we're not going to listen moving forward, we're ultimately going to fail. And this administration has done nothing more than listen each time there's been a problem, address the concerns that have been presented to them, and I believe that's why us as an entire board has great confidence that this program will ultimately be a success, or it will be modified to be successful no matter what. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Well said.
So, we have a motion and a second. All, we are all in favor, and that is everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to personnel.
Sorry, there you go.
That's okay, we'll be here. I am asking for board approval this evening for personnel items on schedules five, seven, eight, eleven, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, and twenty-two.
Everyone has that, if you get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Christine and Barry, anybody have any questions? All in favor? That is everyone. Any announcements?
I believe there is at least one announcement I'd like to make tonight, if I can just find it, and it would be on schedule thirteen. This evening, we have appointed, this has been a long time coming, as you know, we've been using in the business office some outside contracted services to assist Mrs. Acker with the closing of the books and other items, Booksmart and state aid planning. We have finally asked for, and thank you for adopting the appointment of a principal accountant, which would be the assistant in the business office, which will allow us to scale back on some of those other services. It's actually going to be a financial benefit, but we're proud to have Mr. Jorge Soto on board with us.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, moving on to our-
I'm going to give her a little applause. Mr. Levine, he's got plenty of private county accounting experience, he's a CPA, and we're happy to have him on board.
Moving on to our business items, Ms. Acker.
Okay, upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education, approve items I through P on this evening's business agenda.
Okay, so I'll have that, can I motion to approve?
Motion.
Jen, and a second?
Second.
Barry, anybody have any questions? I just have one quick question, I hope, sorry, Xavier.
Good, good.
On the contract for the transportation, what if they don't find savings?
If they don't find savings, then we are in the hole.
Okay.
But I will tell you that-
He did last night.
Yeah, he did, and he found considerable savings. This is a conversation that Mrs. Acker and I had repeatedly. The same gentleman who did the work for us the last time around is actually part of that School Source Technologies, is that what it is, School Source Technologies?
Yes.
At this point, I have been convinced, and I cannot promise it by any stretch of the imagination, but I have been convinced that there is plenty here that will realize that $35,000 fee back. Could be wrong, it may be less than that, but we don't believe so at this point. And I do believe this is a necessary component of our financial process at this point.
Good.
I have a quick question also. I'm just curious, like, number or percentage-wise, how many kids don't end up going to Greenkill, just out of the, because we're approving this contract for the state home program? Is it a lot?
The one principal who can probably answer that.
A hundred and six are not going.
Oh, thank, thank you, Patty.
That was very helpful. Thank you.
We are creating two, I think the number is two forty-two, who are taking, and a hundred and six are staying back.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Patty will be the source of all photographs taken at the Greenkill site that will be posted on Facebook in the days to come. Thank you, Patty.
Jim loves that day, because it increases our Huntington Union Free School District Facebook profile, because we've got a whole bunch of new members.
Right, ups and downs.
Xavier, did you have a question?
Oh, yes, school budgetary library commitment to $55,000, that's going to be another line on the election?
That'll be-
Oh, I guess, is that what, that's going to happen?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Acker, that'll be worked into our regular furniture budget for the library. One of the commitments we had to make in accepting this Sam Grant was to furnish the facility that they're building, so this was planned all along.
So, this is in a separate vote?
This is separate from the grant, it's not included in the grant, so anything, not, any other donations, grant, et cetera, this is on top of that.
Okay, and it'll be the explanation of the increase in the 200 code, the equipment code, when we do the presentations, that $55,000 has been placed there.
I thought we were going to have a separate line to vote on, that's what I thought.
Right, no, like, at election time, it will be a resolution.
It'll be part of the general fund budget, and this resolution, I'm glad you brought it up, because I was going to bring it up earlier today, it has to be resolved before they provide us with the grant. This is something we were going to need to do anyway, and it makes much more sense to do it in a new facility.
To bring in furniture and shelving, to do the entire, all at once, was a hundred and $2,000. So, we're going to have a five-year plan of phasing in what we need to get the library to where we need it to be.
When do you think we're going to be able to see that plan?
The five-year plan?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I could show you that, yeah.
I just think people would be interested.
Well, it's going to be, that's going to be part of the-
It's not a capital part, it's a five-year plan of buying furniture and shelves.
Was that what you're asking about, Christine?
I just was wondering the plan for the library, like, if we were-
That's what I thought she was asking.
Yeah, the capital piece comes out of the grant, so once I get, you know, this is the final piece, getting this resolution, the school district has committed to funding furniture, I'll send it up, and it could take a year or two to approve it. For the meantime, I'll start phasing in the purchase of the furniture and the shelving, instead of doing it all at once.
Did you mean the design of it?
The idea, yeah, that what was going to happen.
It was the whole concept, where are we now, where do we end up?
I can have that for you.
That'd be nice.
I know that Beth and Brendan and Jeff have gone and visited multiple libraries, and they met with a vendor.
Yes, we met with Waldner's, and they gave us a sketch of the entire space, they asked us for feedback, what shape the tables were, what size the tables were.
Looking to add actual during the budget season, so whenever.
No, I have the email, it's in the book, so I could just send you the quote that we got.
Is there, is there a rendering?
There is in one of the quotes, is there?
Because I haven't seen the rendering yet myself.
A rendering.
I think there is.
I believe so.
I don't know how, like, full rendering, but I know the space where shelving was off.
Okay, but let's take a look at it tomorrow, and maybe if more is needed, we pass the architect's-
We can go back to the, well, the vendor, they'll be doing it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
We all good?
Yep.
Okay, so a motion and a second, all in favor? That is everybody. Takes us to our second public commentary of the evening.
We had some donations.
Donations, sorry.
No, that's okay, I'm going to do them really fast. We had four donations tonight. The first was from ExxonMobil, they presented us a donation of $500 to Finley Middle School, and it'll be used to support math and science programs. So, thank you to them. Did we put in for a grant for that? Is that how we got that?
Yes, we did.
That's awesome.
Yes.
Okay, great.
It's fairly generic, it just has to be, we have to submit documentation that shows that it's used to support math and science.
Math and science, right. All right, the second one was from the Huntington Booster Club, and they presented the following donations to the Huntington High School Athletic Department. There's a pole vault carry bag, some track locks, and lacrosse bounce back. So, we'd like to thank the Huntington Booster Club for that very generous donation. We also have a donation from SEPTA. They are donating over $3,000 to the school district to support nine different grants that staff members put in and applied for, and it's a very generous donation from them, and thank you to both them and the staff members who put in for it.
And you see our account codes there, but what I will tell you is that Mr. Hoops has already constructed a very detailed article outlining every one of those components. So, that'll, you'll see that this week.
You know, it's, I really appreciate when the staff members take the time to do that, because I know that it's time-consuming, and it, you know, it's like, just one more thing, but it really does pay off in the end.
And listen, SEPTA, to give them major props here, they look to support anything and everything that they can possibly support, so thank you to them.
And the last is from the Washington Primary School PTA, who's presenting a donation of just over $2,000 to be used to offset the cost of upcoming field trips. Thank you to everybody who made those donations tonight. Sorry, there you go now.
This takes us to our second public commentary of the evening.
Oh, Ms. Alice Murray.
Hey, Alice, how are you? Where's your guitar?
I wasn't planning on speaking. Hello, everyone. I'm Alice Murray Rourke, and I have four children, my youngest daughter, Mary Grace. I'm going to cry when I say this, my son moved out this weekend, which Jen knows.
I do know.
My, one of my, yeah, yeah.
Is that expected?
Into the city. It's a good thing. No, my youngest, Mary Grace, is in eighth grade. Okay, and will be coming to the high school. My question and my concern is, I love that we're talking about the math, you know, and this new initiative, and I'm very excited about it, because I think it's the right direction for us to go. I have concerns as the mother of special needs as well, but I do think it's the right direction. I do have concerns about English. I don't think that we spend enough time talking about the direction of our English program, because what I've seen over the years as a mother of four, is that since the beginning of the core curriculum, there has been such a lack of spelling, grammar, even phonetic pronunciations of words, and it's just, it's changed. Everything that Mary Grace has done has been all about the reading content and then spitting back information. And I understand the holistic approach to reading, but I had an interesting experience with her that kind of prompted me to come up tonight. Last year, she, she had gone to Alabama and had picked up, at the University of Alabama, Harper Lee's book, To Kill a Mockingbird, very excited to read it, it's a classic. She had to do a project in English and showed it to the teacher, and the teacher said, "No, I don't think that that's a really good book, it may be a little bit above your head, and maybe you should choose something else. Please go choose something over on the shelf." So, she went over to the shelf, and she came home with a book that was called Computer Blog. And as a mom who's trying to teach her children how to read the classics and how to speak proper English and how to have a nice vocabulary, I was really disappointed. And I approached her about it, and she, you know, had her opinion about it, I had mine. But I really feel like, in this generation where we are so technologically driven, that these kids have such a lack of proper pronunciations and proper, you know, ways of speaking and all of that, and I think it's all tied into the fact that we focus so much on math and science and not enough on the English language. So, if there is a program that we can bring to the high school where we are more enriched, I would love to see that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Singing my song as an English major. I would love to see the kids writing more. I have to say, the social media has not helped our, the general writing skills of our students, and, you know, I-
It's definitely a challenge, but I have to say, we've spent a great deal of time, particularly at the elementary level, making sure that writing is included-
Yes.
...in the curriculum, and on a daily basis, Writers Workshop is something that has been developed significantly over the past couple of years. Yeah, and listen, we want to focus on all four core disciplines and all the specials. I mentioned before that we don't want to lose focus on the arts. We want to give these kids everything we can possibly give them, and I think our ongoing goal is to put them in the best position possible, not just to experience high-level, challenging curricula, and I agree, there should be classics infused throughout the English curriculum, and you'll definitely see that certainly at the high school level, and I think they do a decent job at the middle school level as well. But there's always room for improvement, and that's where our focus has to remain. We want these kids not only to be succeeding in these disciplines, I'll mention it again, but to also come out with a sense of enjoyment and excitement about it, so that they, and it sounds cliche, but it's not, that they are interested in remaining lifelong learners. We want these kids to do whatever it is that they desire to do, pursue their interests, but also have an affinity for learning that is insatiable.
I totally agree.
So, thank you, Alice Murray.
On a side note, my son is constantly correcting my English.
His what?
Constantly correcting my English.
Ah.
And the use of its language.
Sterile, okay, see.
Any closing comments by our board members? No one? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Barry?
All of everybody raises their hand.
Christine, all in favor? That's everyone. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
That's about it.
Thank you.